To order. First thing on the agenda we have is our invocation and pledge. Invocation will be led by Commissioner Tommy Little, pledge by Commissioner Bert Shalafant. Please stand.
Let us pray. Our Father in Heaven, thank you for letting us be here tonight. We ask that you bless our deliberations, that you impart on us some of your divine wisdom, that we may do what is in the best interest of the county. We want to ask your blessings on all of our servicemen and our emergency personnel that put their lives on the line to keep us safe. We also want to ask a special blessing this evening for Arlene Cook's family and the loss of their brother, that you would lay your healing hand on them and comfort them in this time of their loss. Again, we thank you for all our many blessings. Thank you for this wonderful county, and in thy name we pray. Amen.
Would you join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is roll call. If you're present, push your yes button and confirm.
Yes, my pleasure.
You're not here.
Yes. Okay, I was trying to get my phone just to be there.
Record the roll, Ms. Anderson.
We've heard from Commissioner Cook and Commissioner Davis.
I've also heard from Commissioner Ryan. He's delayed, he's traveling due to the storms, and he intends to be here before the evening's out. So, next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the 2013 May, 2013 County Commission meeting. Copies were mailed to each member. I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Commissioner Wilson, Commissioner Little the second. Commissioner Bredford? Did you have a comment?
No. Oh, I think I might have hit the wrong button as I was trying to...
It's working though.
It's working now.
That's probably from last month. If there are no discussion, I'll... We'll approve the minutes as submitted by signified the same I.
Aye.
Opposed? They're submitted. Also, accept a motion on the Highway Commission minutes. Those copies were also mailed to you. Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Langston the second. Any addition or discussion to those? I see not all in favor of those. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And they pass unanimously. Next item on the agenda is citizen communication, and we don't have any communication, citizen communication tonight, so we're moving on. Communications and messages. We've got four late file resolutions, Resolution 24, 25, and 26. They're on your agenda, under other, and then also Resolution 61327 was put on your desk, and that will be, we will place that at the end of the appropriations agenda, and if there's no objections, we'll hear those. Do I hear any objections? I see none, so we will hear those. Also, I'd like to thank Deputy Brogdon and Deputy Calvani for being here, from Sheriff's Department, and also Sheriff Jeff Long. Thank you for being here, and moving on. Next, we have a proclamation. So we'll call on Mayor Anderson.
Can you read the title?
Proclamation declaring June 16th, June 22nd, 2013 Amateur Radio Week. Commissioner Jack Walton and County Mayor is Roger Anderson.
Mr. Chairman, if I could go out of order just a little bit. I know a lot of the folks are questioning what happened this afternoon, so I'm gonna let Bill kind of give us just a snapshot of this afternoon's rain and wind, and then we'll jump into the proclamation. Bill.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did have a little bit of damage around the county days. I know there's listening to the amateur radio folks. There were some trees down on Old Hillsboro Road north of New Highway 96 West. We know we have a tree into a house, I think it was on Bobby Drive. Thirty-five percent destroyed, uninhabitable, and I know some damage down in Spring Hill, also some trees on houses, but that's about all I know right now.
Thank you, Bill, and as many of you would surmise, the sheriff and a lot of his men and women were out cleaning off a whole bunch of trees and brush all over the part of the county. It's my honor to read a proclamation tonight. As many of you heard Bill say, I mean, Jack say, that this is the amateur radio week, and if you would allow me to read this as Jack and Bill are here. Jack Haddon is our, Gary Haddon is, excuse me, is in charge of our amateur radio, and for many years it's been a public and organized event put on by our men and women and children throughout the county, and hats off to Bill for all of his hard work over the last ten-plus years. For many of us that have some gray hair, you might know this as ham operators. This was those men and women long before we had the electronics that we have today, that in the event of everything goes out this afternoon, these men and women jump in and we get things done. Whereas there are over 200 federally licensed amateur radio operators who reside in Williamson County and are registered members of the Williamson County Amateur Radio Emergency Service, WE CARES, and the members of WE CARES have consistently demonstrated their commitment to public service by willingly volunteering their individual time and utilizing their own personal radio equipment at no cost for the benefits of the citizens of Williamson County in order to provide a source of reliable radio communication support in the aftermath of natural disasters or other public emergency situations. And whereas in addition to their regular participation in local emergency communication training exercise, Williamson County amateur radio operators actively participate in an annual nationwide field day communication exercise sponsored by the American Radio Relay League, the National Association for the Amateur Radio. This year, the 2013 Field Day exercise will take place on June 22nd and 23rd, so it'd be I, and resolved along with the rest of the Board of Commissioners here, to claim and proclaim this is the week amateur radio week. Roger Anderson, thank you very much for what you do.
Thank you, sir. That pretty well says it all, as it has in the past. I just want to invite you to Freedom Middle School, which is where this year's Field Day is going to be, actually, and we're on the air from 1:00 Saturday afternoon until 1:00 Sunday afternoon, and you're all welcome to come and see what we're all about anytime during that time period. Saturday afternoon is the best, but come on out, and you'll see an amazing setup. Thanks.
Thank you.
Next, we have a proclamation honoring the 2013 Franklin High School AAA State Boys Soccer Championship Team. Commissioner Barnwell?
Commissioner Barnwell would like for me to read this, as he is, all of these names, and I see a few of them may trick me up here just a little bit, Bob, but we'll do our best. If I could have the coach up here a little bit, and all the young men to come up, and if you would, this may be a challenge, Coach. Could you get them lined up alphabetical?
Yes.
And if you can't, we're going to talk to the school superintendent about eight minutes later.
Last name, yes. We're going to get the coach to help me out. Let me say thanks to this fine yet group of young men here, and Coach, for your leadership. All of us in a leadership role throughout the world understand that less things are done by the coach, and before we announce the boys, it's always directed by someone with high statute of morals, and we appreciate what you do here in Williamson County.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Whereas the win is the Franklin High School Boys Soccer Team's, the first state championship, came against a fitting opponent. Franklin lost to Farragut 2 to 0 in the first TWSAA State Championship game in 1987. And whereas the Franklin High School Boys Soccer Team completed in the state AAA tournament and won the title on May 24th, 2013, and were declared the 2013 State AAA Boys Champion Soccer Championship, and whereas the High School Boys Soccer Team defeated Farragut 3 to 1 in the class AAA State Championship game, and whereas Connor Quiddo headed a Matt Brady cross into the net in the match's 13th minute, Alister Berger gave a commanding two-goal advantage 11 minutes later, striking a shot from 35 yards out that found its way under the crossbar and over Farragut's goalkeeper Gus Green's outstretched arms. Brady, who had a shot glance off the pole nine minutes into the second half, put the Rebels on top 3 to 0 midway through the final half. The 2013 Franklin High School Boys Soccer Team holds a season record of 18 wins, 0 losses, and 2 ties. Congratulations, and here they are as we call them off. Coach?
Tony Breslin. Drew Collins. Daniel Inceso. John Fly. Evan Forrest. Parker Lamb. JT Mannion. Ben Norris.
We have a gift for you, and thank you for inviting us.
Thank you.
Luke Rogers. Brad Ross. Jacob Smith. Jimmy Wester. Austin Wimberly. Chris Winfrey. And Alex Zedionchuk. Thank you very much. Assistant Coach Jack Terrio. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Your 2013 Boys Soccer.
Thank you all very much, and thanks for coming out. It's impressive turnout, and feel welcome to leave if you'd like. I know you'd like to stay for your civics lesson, but...
There's the door.
I think they were getting...
Okay. I guess as long as it went big. County Mayor Roger Anderson.
I didn't have the heart, Jack, to tell them. Many of you know I went to Farragut High School. It was a one-room school back there, but come on up, Nina, this is a...
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight in our packets, you have the Cool Springs Conference Center report for the month of April. They turned in $68,046 to the county. Also this month, you have your April report, your budget report. Things are tracking well for this time of year. One note I'd like to throw out there, we reached a milestone in the month of May. Our real property assessed value topped $8 billion. Our privilege tax report, we're still showing strong collections in our privilege taxes. You'll notice a spike in the month of April. I checked with the building codes department, that was just residential permits. The main growth was in the city of Franklin for that. That's all I have for our monthly reports, if you have any questions.
Okay. Anybody have a question for Nina? I see none, thank you.
I think Nina touched on it, but I wanted to also say to you all, the real property value is a significant milestone for Williamson County. When she said it was over $8 billion, it's $8 billion and five. Let me give you the counties that are ahead of us, Shelby, Davidson, Knox, and Hamilton. And if Brad Coleman does his job over the next year, we should go on the appraisal side, and we should pass Hamilton County here very shortly. So we are knocking on the doors, and that's a real credit to you and all the people that live in Williamson County for what they do. That's $8.5 billion is a lot of money. If I could, my only other remark, Jack, is to invite you down here tomorrow night in this room, 5:30 is the public hearing, that under the efforts of the Budget Committee this year chaired by Ernie Williams and other members, Arlene Cook is not here, of course, and Judy Hayes, I'm missing someone.
Steve Smith.
Yeah, and I appreciate very much the hard work that all of them put in. As many of you know, in the July County Commission meeting, which will start at 9:00 that morning, we'll be presenting to you the budget for the 1314 year with no tax increase, so I'll entertain any questions, Jack.
Any questions for the mayor? I see none, thank you. Next, we'll hear from Williamson County School Superintendent or Director of Schools, Dr. Mike Looney.
Good evening, everyone. I did not go to Farragut High School, but I certainly am proud of the Franklin High School Soccer Team. We have closed school for the year. Our graduates collected $112,700,000 of scholarships, which represents a 44% return on the taxpayers' dollars or contributions towards the school. I have been searching as many places as I can, and I don't know if we're ranked number one in the state in that category or not, but I haven't been able to find anybody that's beat us. So I certainly think that we're in the very, very elite of the nation. Forty-four cents on every tax dollar collected has been returned in the form of scholarships to Williamson County students, and I think that says a remarkable, a lot of things about both this commission's effort to support schools, but the efforts of our parents and our students and our teachers. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Dr. Looney?
Dr. Looney, I have a question on the textbook review process. I'd like to get an update on that, but before you give me that, I have a question. It's my understanding that the school where the formal complaint was initiated is supposed to be where the committee meets and is supposed to have their PTO president on that committee, and my understanding is that the PTO president from Centennial has not even been notified, and that the committee's not meeting at the school where the formal complaint was initiated. I'm just curious to why and where can one get a copy of this policy for the committee?
Well, the policy is in the school board policy manuals available online at www.wcs.edu. The information that you have, Ms. Anderson, is incorrect. The complaint was filed at Franklin High School, not Centennial.
Then you're right, it's very incorrect, because the paper saying it was Centennial, it was Lori Credesamore filed the formal complaint, so you're telling me you've...
I'm telling you the complaint was filed at Franklin High School.
Okay, thank you for getting that on the record.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Dr. Looney? I see none, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Oh, any other committee wishing to speak? Commissioner Hayes?
If I might, I'd like to have Doug Brightwell stand up. This is the last committee, commission meeting that Doug will be with us. He has been tapped because of his excellent work here to go to Fort Myers, Florida. When he came to us as Director of Williamson County Animal Control and Adoption, he was given the instructions to improve adoptions and decrease euthanasia. He has done so. Euthanasia rate has gone from the mid to high 70s down to 30%, and it would be a lot less than that, about 10% if feral cats were not the issue. Doug has done an outstanding job, and I personally want to thank him for me, for this commission, for Williamson County, and for all the animals who now have new homes, forever homes, and all the good he's done. I'd like to wish him well and thank him for a job well done.
Thank you, Judy, and thank you, Mr. Brightwell. Also, I want to take a minute. I noticed Representative Glenn Cassidy in the room. Glenn, you're always welcome, good to see you. All right. Next, moving on to elections and appointments. Williamson County Convention and Visitors Bureau Directors, we've got kind of a typo on there. It's a three-year term expiring 6 of 2016, and term expiring Lou Green, nomination Lou Green. Also, we have a three-year term expiring 6 of 2015, Judy Hayes, term expiring nomination Judy Hayes. I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Langston the second. Any other nominations? I see none. All in favor of those two nominees? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, they are unanimously approved. Independent Audit Committee, three-year term expiring 6 of 16, term expiring Kerry Parkinson, nomination Kerry Parkinson. I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Hayes the second, Commissioner Langston the second, the motion. Any other nominations? I see none. All in favor of Mr. Parkinson? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And he passes. Let's see, yeah, okay. Then Library Board of Trustees, the agenda says Doris McMillan, but it should be Ginger Shurling. So term expiring is Ginger Shurling, Bob Barnwell, Shannon Brewer. Nomination Lizzie Crump, Bob Barnwell, and Shannon Brewer. I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Wilson.
And Ryan.
Mr. Ryan the second. Any other nominations? I see none. If you're in favor of those nominees, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah.
Okay. One abstention, so Commissioner Barnwell. Next election or appointment, Veteran Service Officer, two-year term expiring 6 of 2015, term expiring Ken Marshall, nomination Ken Marshall.
Second.
Mr. Bain, motion?
Hester.
Mr. Hester the second. Any other nominations? I see none. If you're in favor of Mr. Marshall, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And he is confirmed. Consent agenda? The only thing on the consent agenda tonight is the notaries, so I'll entertain a motion.
motion approval.
Mr. Smith. Shalafant the second. Okay. I think it's on the machine, so we'll abstain on the machine. Those in favor of the consent agenda signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed or no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson. Okay, and consent agenda passes. No unfinished business, moving on to new business. Well, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
I just would like to, before we start our actual business portion, I would like to let everyone know, mark your calendars, we have lots of festivals and community events going on, and on June the 22nd, the Trinity United Methodist Church is having their fish fry, their annual fish fry. It is from 4:00 to 7:00. Trinity Church is at 2084 Wilson Pike, and the cost of the ticket is $12 for adults, and for children, 6 to 12 is $6. And we'd love to have everyone come. I know there's one other event going on at another church, but we all have learned to go to different events and try to make it all in one night. So anyway, just wanted to let you know, and if you're out that way, we'd sure love to have you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving on to zoning, we have a public hearing regarding Resolution Number 6131, Resolution to amend the zoning ordinance text originally adopted May 14th, 2012, as it relates to specialty education facility intellectually and developmentally disabled. So ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. When I open the public hearing, if you'll come forward, state your name and your address, and please limit your comments to three minutes. So, public hearing is now open.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak in favor of this amendment. My name is Dick Wells. I live in District 9 at 337 Whitewater Way, and before that, I was a longtime resident of Commissioner Wilson's district on Springcroft Drive, so I'm a 30-year resident of Williamson County. I want to thank Joe Horn and the Planning Commission, the planning staff and commission for a lot of work they put into making it possible for us to expand the services that we have for adults with special needs in Williamson County. Brightstone has been here for 11 years. It's my privilege to serve as the chairman of the board, and our desire is to do more for more people. This amendment will make that possible. Everything that we want to do is already allowed in Williamson County. It's just by the way the wording came out, it wasn't possible to do it in one place. And in reality, that's what this amendment does. It allows us to bring together in one place things that are already permitted all over our county, and it's... And it's our desire to build a campus in Williamson County in the rural areas as required by this amendment. This is a special county. It'll have to be a special campus. We will meet the Williamson County standard in what we do. Of course, we will comply with all the state regulations and rules. And just a couple, in case you're thinking, we don't have land yet because we haven't had this amendment passed, so... But if we get a favorable result here tonight, we will begin immediately a land search. There's a lot of Brightstone people here tonight in the red. Y'all want to wave your hand or stand up or something? This is really just a small part of the Brightstone community. We actually have probably somewhere between 4,000 and 5,000 people that actively support Brightstone through our Writers' Night and a number of different events that we host in this county every single year. So, we're going to honor your time tonight. We don't have a lot to say. We have one parent, Peggy Moss, that's going to make a few comments. Then if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those. Our Executive Director Brenda Hawk is here, and she can certainly answer any questions that you might have. We are very grateful for your consideration of this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wells.
Hello. I am Peggy Moss. I live at 133 Gillette Drive here in Franklin, and we've moved here about 1986. I have a son, or we have a son, Al Moss. He has Down Syndrome. He's 27 years old. He also has autism and is non-verbal, and he's about six years old developmentally. We moved to Williamson County because we heard of such a great reputation for the Williamson County school system, for our girls, as well as a very good reputation for the special ed program here. And we found that to be absolutely true. And so, thank you for that. What a blessing it's been to live here. When Al was born, we had no idea what a blessing he would be to our family and to our lives and to our friends and so many people in this community. Just to give you a little bit of a feel for Al and the kind of joy that he has brought to us, I'm going to tell you a quick story. When he was about six or seven years old, we met some friends at a Mexican restaurant here in town, and it was a, one of those situations where you have children, so they want to put you in the back table in the back of the restaurant, and it was crowded, and so the, it was fairly narrow between the tables, and so we all single filely went back to the table, and when we got there, Al had a taco in his hand. So, we have many stories that ongoing that he brings to our life, and we have really enjoyed him. Special needs adults, they bring so much joy to our community. They are, truly are, a gift to our world. And I just kind of want to think about that for a minute. We all dream for our children to have full lives, to be productive, to live, to love, and to be loved. That's what we all want for our children. And for my girls, it was easy to dream. For Al, I did not know what kind of future, what kind of life he would have. And we do, when the Williamson County wonderful experience was over, we had a dreaded day. And one Saturday, we were at the bowling alley and ran into a young man, John Hasty, that we knew from the school system. He was a few years ahead of Al, and he asked us what we planned on doing for Al, and he asked us to please consider Brightstone where he attends. Now, what better endorsement is that? Somebody who goes there, that loves it, and really wanted us to come and see it. So when we did go and visit Brightstone, for the first time, I was able to envision what kind of life Al was going to have and what an opportunity and a blessing that it could be for him, that he could have a full life, that he could live and be among friends and community, to love, to be loved. Brightstone offers that. And it's a, it's an educational facility. He continues to grow and to learn. I could keep him at home, trust me. I love him, he's a blast, but he would, he would really regress if he stayed at home every day. And so what Brightstone has done for him is continued to help him grow and learn and develop. You know, he, all of us have different jobs because we all have different gifts and interests. Well, it's the same thing with them. And one of the things, like my oldest daughter is a counselor. My youngest daughter is a diamondologist. You know, they love doing different things. And Brightstone wants to develop a bigger facility where they can offer more opportunities, more variety, to fit their different interests. And so, I just want to encourage you to seriously consider that. Just as I said earlier, I just want to close on just saying that I'm so proud of Williamson County. I'm proud of our reputation, just like y'all were talking about earlier with the school system and the reputation it carries, as well as the special education it carries. And I would really be so proud for Williamson County to be the one who hosts such a wonderful campus and a wonderful opportunity. Fortunately for Al, the waiting list was short, and we got him in. But y'all, there's a long waiting list, and there's a lot of need out there, and we would really appreciate y'all taking that consideration. Because for Brightstone, I will say that you want to go where everybody knows your name, and they're always glad you came, and that's the way it is at Brightstone. They love each other, and they have a great day. So thank you so much for your time and consideration of this. This is very important to our hearts. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moss. Anybody else? Last call. All right, we'll close the public hearing. Now moving on to the resolution. Resolution 613-1, a resolution to amend the zoning ordinance text originally adopted May 14, 2012 as it relates to specialty education facility intellectually and developmentally disabled. Shalafant the second. Planning Commission was nine, four, zero against. I'm the sponsor of this, but do what? Kristi, do you, you want to kind of explain this, or Joe?
Good evening. The genesis of this particular amendment's about, been about a year's worth of work. During the latter stages of the adoption of zoning ordinance, the folks from Brightstone approached staff with their idea of what, thank you, of what they would like to see in their facility. We had, we had categories, as was said earlier, that sort of fit it, but did not completely encompass what they sought to do. This particular amendment sort of combines the elements of a college campus, institutional, residential, and retirement complex with the idea that they can, that this, this campus can come together and offer services for their particular clientele. We looked at a number of other places throughout the country. There are places similar to this in Texas, in Kentucky, and in Mississippi, and we took the knowledge we could gain from those facilities, as well as what we could perhaps make it more of a Williamson County-ish. And that's what these particular amendments hope to accomplish. If there's any specific questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Commissioner Hester?
I don't really have a question, Mr. Horn, but I do appreciate the work that you have done in helping Brightstone with this matter. And I was concerned about some of the safety issues, and I am very satisfied with the way they've been addressed with the sprinkler system. There are many, and if I may say, Mr. Chairman, there are many needs in our county for intellectually delayed individuals. And I appreciate all the work that Brenda Hawk has done in this program. And I'm going to invite you to go by Brightstone. Brenda told me I could. She may not be happy with me now, but it is close to Noah Drive and southeast Industrial Boulevard there in Franklin, and you need to see the facility. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I see none. You ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution 613-1, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes.
I know y'all are welcome to stay. But if you'd like, we'll take a quick five-minute recess and let you leave. So thank you. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing regarding Resolution 613-2, Resolution of the Williamson County Board of Commissioners to adopt amendments to the 2013 zoning ordinance text originally adopted May 14, 2012 regarding craft distilleries in the Rural Preservation Five zoning district. So, like before, we'll open the public hearing, and if you'll come up to the microphone, state your name and your address, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Public hearing's now open.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. My name is John Gibson. My wife and I live at 3371 South Hall Road in a two-story, fully restored home built in 1875. The proposed craft distillery is going to be built right next door to us, and we don't mind a bit. Did I say that right?
You did well.
We have no objections. Mr. Kennedy has come to us a little over two years ago. Originally, when he came up with his proposed plan, sat down with us, and we spent a good bit of time sitting down, going over with him the plans of it, everything about it. It is a very professional plan in order to build a craft distillery, and we fully approve of it. I'd like to raise two little points while I'm here. Number one, income. The county always likes to talk about income. Now, this craft distillery is going to produce income not only for the county, but also for the state of Tennessee and federal income. It's a very closely regulated business. The second thing is tourism. The wonderful people in Williamson County do a marvelous job of promoting tourism in this county. There is tourism besides Confederate battlegrounds. Leapers Fork now has turned into a complete tourist destination. If you haven't been out there lately, you really should go and take a look. This is going to add another dimension to the tourist coming and seeing because there won't be another one like it, at least for a while, as I understand it. So ladies and gentlemen, that's all I've got to say. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson.
I'm Clarence Johnson. I live at 8958 Horton Highway College Grove, Tennessee. And I don't know how I could say it any better than Mr. Gibson did. Can't add anything to it except I am in support of the ordinance. Number one, I'd love to sip good whiskey. And I do think it's going to be a tremendous asset, not only to Leapers Fork, but of Williamson County, and also for the tourism throughout the county. And I think it would be a tremendous asset to get this changed, taken place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Hi, everybody. My name is Rainey Kirk, and I live at 3121 Carl Road. Mr. Kennedy's property extends, for this project, extends behind my property. And after Lee also came to our house and gave us a talk about what his plans were, we're absolutely for it because one of the great things about it is right behind, the view behind our house is wonderful, and that won't change a bit, and we won't end up with all these houses up there. So, I'm for it, and I have no complaints. Thank you.
Very good.
Hello. My name is Lee Kennedy, and I live at 2405 Old Charlotte Pike. And I'm the applicant named in the text amendment. And I know this project isn't site-specific, and I've had a lot of people get up and speak on my behalf. You know, this is a, something that affects RP5 as a whole, and I realize that. And the illustrations you all have in front of you, they represent, even though that's what our project will look like, it's a visual of what this text amendment looks like in practice. So even though this is not a site-specific vote, and I'm very aware of that, I had my first county, my first meeting with the planning staff, Mr. Horn and Mr. Madison, in January 2012. And we sat down and talked about some of the attempts that had been made before this text amendment at this specific industry, and realized some of the pitfalls and some of the things that were done wrong in hindsight. And so, really, we spent a year and a half meeting with our neighbors, my specific project, but also meeting with industry consultants and industry scientists, the leading master distillers in the industry and leading scientists. We also spent a lot of time in Kentucky and Tennessee visiting craft distillery sites. We went as far as Texas and Scotland, trying to make sure that whatever we designed with the county was in the best interest of the county and distillers and maintain the rural feel of the county. Also, we analyzed the craft distilling industry as a whole and to see if this was something that could fit the county. And the amendment you have before you tonight, we think, represents the due diligence that was taken over that course of a year and a half. To kind of put the text amendment in perspective, it caps the maximum gallons production per year at 25,000 gallons. And to kind of, you know, you see, you hear 25,000 gallons, but to really understand what that is, is Jack Daniels makes about 65,000 gallons per day. So, a facility of this size would take almost two and a half years to make what they would make in one day. Arrington Vineyards, which is also created through the text amendment process, produces roughly 40,000 gallons of wine a year. So this facility, again, would be almost half of that. And it's, I know it's a stretch comparing milk to whiskey, but Hatchery Dairy, which was also created through the text amendment process, they make about 125,000 gallons of milk per year, so this, again, would be about a fifth of that. So, really with the, with craft distilling, the emphasis is on low volume, low impact, and quality versus quantity. And in 2000, in the year 2000, there were 24 craft distilleries around the country. In 2005, that number was 52. In 2011, that number jumped to 234. And the American Distilling Institute speculates that in the next five to 10 years, that number will be well over 1,000. And what's going on in the state of Tennessee, in 2009, the state had some very forward-thinking legislation, and the counties that allowed liquor by the glass, they allowed craft distilleries to open. In the year 2009, there was one craft distillery operating, and now there are seven with another three to four that are in the planning stages anytime. Among the counties of Tennessee, Williamson County has long been a leader, and we are proud of the standards that the staff and that the county sets, that we're proud of the standards that this amendment will set, and we feel like it best represents those standards as it relates to the craft distilling industry. We also feel that if the county is going to craft the distill, embrace the craft distilling industry, this is the best way for them to get in front of it and to make sure that it's both beneficial for the county and... and to make sure that it's both beneficial for the county and for distillers alike. With the things that are, like Mr. Gibson said, with the things that are going on inside the county, we realize there's a thriving heritage tourism here, the reclamation of the battlefield, some boutique hotels that are being proposed. And we feel that this industry would fit seamlessly into the vision that Williamson County has in that regard. So, thank you for your time, and if I can ask you any questions, I will.
Thank you. Any other, anybody else wishing to speak? Last call. So, the public hearing is closed. Judy, let me get this on the, did you want to speak?
I was requested to speak on the prior, prior.
On the other resolution? You want to speak now about it, or that's just old?
Well, I was just going, I was just going to say that I was very much in support, as I am in this one, but I was going to say that I was voting in memory of Dr. Craig Farrell, as well as all the appreciation that was expressed. But thank you for allowing me to say that, yes. He did a marvelous job in founding that.
Yes, he did. Very good. All right. Resolution of the Williamson County Board of Commissioners to adopt amendments to the 2013 Williamson County zoning ordinance originally adopted May 14, 2012, regarding craft distilleries in the Rural Preservation 5 zoning district. Commissioner Brockland, Commissioner Smith II. Any discussion?
Yes, they are. You're number five now.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes, Ms. Chairman, thank you. On behalf of the Williamson County Convention Visitors Bureau, I want to thank you all for the comments about tourism in Williamson County. We work hard to promote that. And as somebody who drove by Arrington Vineyards about 5:00 on Saturday afternoon, if you do half as well as they've done, it'll be a smashing success. So, congratulations.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes, Ms. Chairman, Commissioners. This is just another, another little piece of a beautiful puzzle that's been, been put together, not only in Leapers Fork, but all over Williamson County. I'm, have represented this district for a number of years. And this will really aid in tourism and people coming to the village. It'll bring in revenue to the county through the visitors that come in. This is win-win for everybody, and I encourage everyone to support it. Thank you.
Commissioner Ford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When I first read this, I was concerned about opening up industrial uses into what we're classified as rural preservation. And opening up and setting that precedent concerned me quite a bit. Seeing the professionalism and hearing from Mr. Kennedy and the neighbors has helped me over that hurdle a bit. I would, however, like to offer one amendment to this that I think is in, in keeping with the spirit, but does some clarification. So, if you look on, it's 10, it's the entire piece. "In" is the sub-letter, and then "I" with, under that, it reads, "Where otherwise permitted by state or federal law and regulation, the tasting and sale of spirits and other distillery-related products shall be permitted." After tasting and sale of spirits, I'd like to insert "produced on-site." The way this is written, this does not restrict any, in any, the distillery from selling or tasting of spirits from anywhere. And so, I think the intent of this is for the tasting rooms to be of the spirits that are produced on-site. So, I'd like to suggest that amendment.
All right.
Would you restate?
Sure. And right after "spirits," where it says, "The tasting and sale of spirits, insert 'produced on-site.'"
Which section?
It is on 10, "in", "I." Right at the bottom of the second or the third page. 10, it's on the, on the actual attachment. I have spoken to staff about this today, also spoken to legal counsel, understand that this is within the spirit of what they're trying to do, and also understand that this, from legal opinion, would not cause this to have to go back before the planning commission. So, I'd like to offer that amendment.
All right, proper motion. Do we have a second? Commissioner Dwight Jones? On the amendment. So, any discussion on the amendment? Yeah, and I also like to get a, maybe a legal opinion from Christie. I don't see her now, but.
Yes, sir. I think that Mr. Ford is absolutely right. That is the spirit of the way that was written. It's a way for manufacturers to allow consumers to taste their product and to buy that product there. That's a big help for the little guys in the industry, but it's absolutely for the, for the spirit produced on-site. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just briefly, after Commissioner Ford spoke with Planning Director Mike Madison about this particular issue, Mike and I talked about it. And this is the intent, as clearly seen from other parts of this amendment, that it was for the tasting and sales of the spirit produced on the site. It's likely already limited that way by state law. But as you all know, in Williamson County, we like to make sure things are the way we want them. And so, when Commissioner Ford proposed this amendment, because it is considered more of a clarification, a minor clarification, not a significant change or change to the terms, then it would not require it to go back to the planning commission, because that's what the commission intended to begin with. And then, I can answer any questions. And Mike Madison is also here, if you have any other questions.
All right, but don't go far away. Commissioner Smith?
That answered my question, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Hayes, I want to make sure to give you an opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Cancelled.
I just want to say that we certainly appreciate Mr. Kennedy and craft distilleries. They have let us show what planning and amendments to a plan can be done at its best. And all the staff has worked very well with them. These two resolutions we've seen tonight have been perfect examples of things that we have known, the type of things when we planned and passed the comprehensive land plan, that there would be tweaks, there would be amendments. These have been both well-done, well-presented with people who were greatly in need and had done their work. And I want to thank Mr. Kennedy for the hard work that he did, the patience he exhibited, the kindness, he never lost his temper. He always stayed cool and calm and went through the process. And that's, that's very exceptional with our planning process sometimes. But I think we have a better product. It will be good for tourism. It will be good for our community, be good for our taxes. And I think overall, that we have a better plan tonight because of our two resolutions and how they were tweaked than we had ever before. And I do offer your, say that I will certainly support it.
All right. Any other discussion on the amendment? I see none. Is it loaded, Linda? All right. If you're in favor of the amendment, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes. Zero, no.
All right, we're back to Resolution 613-2 as amended. Any further discussion as amended? I see none. And I'd like, if I may, make a comment. At the planning commission, it was brought forth that they intend to purchase crops and things locally to, to make their product, and then turn around and use the by-product for food, which is very, I won't get it right. I missed that day in farming school, but it sounds like a win-win situation. So, ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution 613-2, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes. Zero, no.
Resolution passes. Congratulations. We look forward to having you as a neighbor. Resolution 613-3, Resolution amending the 2012-13 highway department budget and appropriating up to $50,000 for additional engineering costs. Revenue is to come from unappropriated highway fund balance. Commissioner Hancock?
Second.
Commissioner Little, the second. Highway Commission, 540 against. Budget Committee?
Budget Committee was 540 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Hancock?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This is, money will be spent for two enterprises or two efforts. One is already in the process of taking place or completed, and that's some core drillings for the Cottonwood area as it relates to the sinkholes that, excuse me, that popped up there a while back. And I think they've already gotten a bill for that, which is $12,000. The other is for, to contract out a contact-sensitive consulting engineering firm. As everyone knows that has followed this for any length of time, that's a very, a very historic strip of road there for a couple of miles. And we want, everyone wants to be sure that it's done and can keep the historical value intact and at the same time, be done right. And I think this will lend itself to that happening.
All right. Any questions? I see none. You ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution 613-3, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes. Zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 613-14, Resolution appropriating $35,000 in the 2012-2013 general purpose school fund operating budget for community services. Commissioner Langston?
Move approval.
Second.
Commissioner Smith, the second. School Board, 11 yes, zero no. Education Committee?
5 yes, 0 no.
Budget Committee?
540 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Langston?
Yes, Ms. Chairman. School Board allows certain groups to use school buildings. And this is to ensure that there will be somebody there to make sure it's cleaned up or locked up.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. You ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution 613-14, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes. Zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 613-15, Resolution appropriating $93,000 from unappropriated fund balance to replace a destroyed bus. Commissioner Langston?
Move approval.
Second.
Mr. Wilson, the second. School Board, 11 4, 0 against. Education?
5 4, 0 against.
Budget Committee?
5 4 0 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Langston?
Yes, Ms. Chairman. We know that there was a school board, or school bus involved in an accident a few months ago, and this is to help pay or pay back the insurance that was paid out on this.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 613-15, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes. Zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 613-16, Resolution appropriating 675,000, I'm sorry, 676,655 dollars from central cafeteria fund balance for indirect cost and additional expenses needed to complete the 2012-2013 fiscal year. Commissioner Langston?
Move approval.
Mr. Little, the second. School Board, 11 yes, 0 no. Education Committee?
5 4 0 against.
Budget Committee?
5 4 0 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Langston?
The money will come from the school cafeteria fund. This is to help meet some accounts, as well as get equipment needed for the next school year.
Any discussion? See none. You ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution 613-16, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes. Zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 613-17, Resolution appropriating $35,000 in the 2012-13 extended school program fund for additional expenses throughout the end of the year. Commissioner Langston?
Move approval.
Mr. Barnwell, the second. School Board, 11 yes, 0 no. Education Committee?
5 4 0 against.
Budget Committee?
5 4 0 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Langston?
Yes, Ms. Chairman. This is money needed to carry out the extended program this year itself, sufficient fund.
Any discussion? I see none. Oh, Commissioner Barnwell, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm. Dr. Looney, this is, this resolution and the last resolution are resolutions we will no longer see, right? Based on a new law?
Yes, sir, that's correct, assuming we remain a high-performance school district. And I believe we will.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Any other question? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 613-17, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Just a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Twenty-two, yes. Zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 613-18, Resolution amending the 2012-13 capital projects budget to accept a donation of $150,000 from the Tennessee Soccer Club, dedicated for improvements to Trinity Park and authorizing the execution of all documents to receive the donation. Commissioner Williams?
Move approval.
Second.
Parks and Rec Committee, did it go before then?
Yes, sir. It's 4, 4 0 against.
Okay. Budget Committee?
5 4 0 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Williams?
This is a $150,000 debt donation from the Tennessee Soccer Club, and it's dedicated to parks and recs to be used specifically for Trinity Park. And Doug, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is the second $150,000 donation that we've received. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
All right. Discussion, Commissioner Wilson?
Yes, I just want to mention that, like Commissioner, Commissioner Williams just mentioned, that Trinity Park is such a vital part of our park system. And lots of, lots of children go there, but this is just an exceptional donation. And I really appreciate them going to that and donating that amount of money to be a part of our park system. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I see none. You ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution 613-18, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes. Zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 613-22, Resolution transferring funds in the amount of $27,000 between major categories within the 2012-13 Rural Debt Service Fund. Commissioner Hayes?
Move approval.
Mr. Little, the second. Budget Committee?
Budget Committee, 5 4 0 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Hayes?
I think it's pretty self-explanatory. The mayor's here, if you have any further questions, but it's just making a transfer that's necessary.
Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 613-22, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Got it? Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Late-file resolution number six thirteen twenty-seven, resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand twelve thirteen County Commission tax relief for the elderly budget by a hundred and eighty-five thousand, one hundred dollars. Revenue is to come from unappropriated county general funds. Uh, Commissioner?
Move approval.
Commissioner Williams?
This, this was just, this resolution was just signed today, proposed by Budget Director. In July of two thousand ten, we implemented, uh, implemented a tax relief program for elderly citizens. Uh, and right now, we're exceeding our budget projections of last year, so we need a expenditure of a hundred and eighty-five thousand, one hundred dollars.
All right. Any discussions? I see none. If you're in favor of late-file resolution six thirteen twenty-seven, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution six thirteen four, resolution declaring certain highway department property and equipment surplus property and authorizing the sale of the property and equipment at auction. Commissioner Hancock?
Move approval.
Mr. Jones, Dwight Jones, the second. Uh, Highway Commission, five, four, zero, against, I'm assuming. Uh, Property Committee?
Four in favor, zero against.
Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero, against.
Uh, Explanation, Commissioner Hancock?
Ms. Chairman, Commissioners, this just gives the mayor, uh, the authority to go ahead and sell this, uh, equipment that's, uh, probably worn out and get what we can get for it, it can't be used anymore.
Any questions? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution six thirteen four, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to execute a lease agreement with Mid Cumberland Community Action Agency for office space in the County Community Services Building.
Move approval.
Brockman?
Second.
Mr. Williams, the second. Property Committee?
Four in favor, zero against.
Uh, Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero, against.
Explanation, Commissioner Brockman?
Yes, this will allow us to enter into a lease agreement, uh, for the space in the Community Services Building on Folk Street, uh, and this is one of a number that are before you tonight.
All right. Commissioner Danner?
Yes, I have a question, I guess for the mayor, I'm not really sure if it's a mayor or a Nina question, but, um, uh, I had the rental amounts sent to me for these, and the, the question, I, I really don't have any problem, I have nothing against, um, leasing any of our property to these nonprofits, or against any of the nonprofits themselves, but my questions are why and who? Why are these rents so different? Some people get a dollar rent, some people have twenty-nine hundred, there's one that has ten thousand, one that's eleven thousand, and I, and I also noticed that, uh, a lot of these are the exact same organizations that we then turn around and give taxpayer dollars to in our nonprofit resolution. And so, that just brings up a lot of questions for me, if, if we're gonna lease it to them, take a certain amount of money, and then turn around and give them money, why not just reduce their rents down to the, some of these, like, these are a dollar? And so, why, uh, are the rents so different? And then, who is, decides how much this rent amount is and who we give to and who we don't give to? Where is that policy?
Start with the first question.
All right.
The rents vary on the ability of the nonprofits' ability to pay.
Okay.
That, and all real property is under my jurisdiction. So, that varies. Most of those, I'd, I'd have to go back before I say it a hundred percent, but probably most of those have been around for fifteen, twenty years. Some of those agencies that are, that are there, several years ago, um, we tried to get some balance of rents, and they vary from square footage to square footage of space. But when you read, you said some of them, um, we give money back to, for an example, I'm not sure which one you're talking about, but when you may read Mid Cumberland, that may be a different Mid Cumberland, there's Mid Cumberland Region, there's Mid Cumberland Action Group, all of those are different organizations with different purpose and direction that those organizations, some of them are regional in scope, but they offer, um, services down here in our community. I don't know if that answers your question.
So, you're, you are the who?
I'd say I'd be the who.
Okay. Um, I, I don't have a problem with leasing, again, like I said, our property, and I don't have a problem with any of these nonprofits, so I will, I'm gonna vote yes on the leasing, but I would like to, uh, when we get to the resolution, when we vote in the budget, on who gets the taxpayer dollars, I would like to see, at some point, uh, a resolution offering some guidelines as to who we pick and who we don't pick.
If I could, Chairman, because we've tried that several times, I'll let you write it out and submit it, and let's see if we can work through it, how's that?
I might do that.
All right.
Any other discussion? I see none. Ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution six thirteen five, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Betsy? Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution six thirteen six, rather, resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to execute a lease agreement with Mid Cumberland Meals on Wheels for office space in the County Community Services Building.
Move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Williams, the second. Uh, Property Committee?
Property, four in favor, zero against.
Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero, against.
Explanation, Commissioner Brockman?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, this is another, um, execute, lease agreement, execution, uh, agreement, and this one is for Mid Cumberland Meals on Wheels in the same building.
All right. Thank you. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution six thirteen six, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution six thirteen seven, resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to execute a lease agreement with Mid Cumberland Human Resources Agency for office space in the County Community Services Building.
Move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Williams, the second. Uh, Property Committee?
Property, four in favor, zero against.
Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero, against.
Explanation, Commissioner Brockman?
Yes, this is a lease agreement with Mid Cumberland Human Resources Agency.
All right. Any discussion?
Same song, second verse, yeah.
Ready to vote? Resolution six thirteen seven, if you're in favor, push your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution six thirteen eight, resolution authorizing Williamson County Mayor to execute a lease agreement with the South Central Tennessee Workforce Alliance for use of rooms in the County Community Services Building to conduct adult education. Commissioner Brockman?
Move for approval.
Second.
Uh, Property Committee?
Property, four in favor, zero against.
Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero, against.
This is the third verse?
It is, it is.
Explanation?
Allows us to execute, or the mayor to execute a lease agreement, um, with this group in the Community Services Building.
All right. We're ready to vote? Favor? There we go. Resolution six thirteen eight, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes, zero, no.
Uh, Resolution six thirteen nine, resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to execute a lease agreement with the Association of Retarded Citizens for office space in the County Community Services Building.
Move for approval.
Second.
Property Committee?
Property, four in favor, zero against.
Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero, against.
Explanation, Commissioner Brockman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, one more, um, execution of the lease agreement, this is for the group ARC.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution six thirteen nine, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution six thirteen ten, resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to enter into a contract with Tax Management Associates Incorporated for audit-related services. Commissioner Brockman?
Move for approval.
Second.
Uh, Tax Study Committee? Four, four, zero, against. Uh, Bro, Property Committee?
Property, four in favor, zero against.
Uh, Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero, against.
Explanation, Commissioner Brockman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, this resolution will allow us to contract out for audit-related services, um, in order to comply, this is the assistance that we need, making sure that we dot our i's and cross our t's and add everything correctly.
All right. Commissioner Barnwell?
I've got a private question for Mr. Molesley. These previous resolutions we've just gone through, aren't these candidates for the consent agenda?
No, because they're not actual renewals, the, uh, the limitation on term, and the fact that we have to reissue them basically means that we have to go through this process. If they're for a lesser term and it's an automatic renewal period, they could go through the consent.
Thank you.
Good question. Uh, let's see, where are we? We're ready to vote? Resolution six thirteen ten? If you're in favor, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution to appoint four members of the Board of Commissioners to a committee with the County Mayor to oversee the sale of property obtained through delinquent tax sales as required by Tennessee Code annotated section sixty-seven dash five dash twenty-five oh seven. Commissioner Brockman?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Wilson, the second. Uh, Property Committee?
Four in favor, zero against.
Purchasing and Insurance Committee?
Five, four, zero, against.
Tax Study Committee?
Uh, four, four, zero, against.
All right. Rules Committee? What?
Four, four, four.
What? Yeah.
Four, four, zero, against.
Uh, Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero, against.
Explanation, Commissioner Brockman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is a resolution based on a requirement that the state has, if there are any delinquent taxes, there has to be a committee oversight, and in order to accomplish this in an efficient, effective way, uh, it was suggested that, that we needed four commissioners, commissioners to serve on a committee, um, and the current members of Purchasing and Insurance Committee, being Commissioners Little, Wilson, Langston, and Hester, could serve with the County Mayor in this capacity. This is, this is a small amount of property, um, this is not something that there will be much deliberation on in terms, I think there were only six or seven, uh, even listed, so, but this is required by the state.
Okay. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution six thirteen eleven, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution six thirteen twelve, resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to enter into an easement and all other documentation with the City of Franklin for easements to be used for the installation and maintenance of a water line. Commissioner Brockman?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Williams, the second. Property Committee?
Property, four in favor, zero against.
Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero, against.
Explanation, Commissioner Brockman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is a resolution based on an easement that needs to be obtained along Long Lane, Long Lane will be altered slightly, and in order for them to get this water line installed, uh, we need to have this agreement.
Any discussion? I see none. You ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution six thirteen twelve, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution six thirteen thirteen, resolution accepting donation of a Segway I-two personal transporter to the Sheriff's Department and authorizing the execution of all documents to obtain ownership of the Segway. Commissioner Hancock? Mr. Jones, the second. Uh, Law Enforcement Committee?
Six in favor, zero against.
Uh, Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero, against.
Explanation, Commissioner Hancock?
This is a donation of, uh, of a Segway, six, six thousand two hundred thirty-nine dollars at the value to the Sheriff's Patrol.
All right. Any discussion?
Just thank them for it.
Just be careful when we leave, we don't want to run over the sheriff. You said it had a light bar on it. Oh, okay, well, good. Ready to vote? If you're in favor of the sheriff riding the Segway, signify by saying yes. I mean, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson. Oh.
We got Mr. Green.
There we go. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes, zero, no.
Congratulations, Sheriff. Uh, Resolution six thirteen nineteen, resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to enter into an agreement with Ameritrust to provide emergency medical services to prison inmates in the custody of the Williamson County Jail or Sheriff's Office. Uh, Commissioner Little?
Move for approval.
Mr. Jones, the second. Purchasing and Insurance Committee?
Five, four, zero, against.
Uh, Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero, against.
Explanation, Commissioner Little?
Yes, Emergent Trust is, uh, the group that runs the emergency room from the hospital, and this is entering to, uh, an agreement to provide medical services for the inmates at the jail.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution six thirteen nineteen, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Right? There we go. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution six thirteen twenty, resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to enter into an agreement with Ameritrust to provide medical services under Williamson County's Workers Compensation Program. Commissioner Little?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Hester, the second. Purchasing and Insurance Committee?
Five, four, zero, against.
Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero, against.
Explanation, Commissioner Little?
Yes, this is the same agreement except it's for workers' comp.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution six thirteen twenty, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution six thirteen twenty-three, resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to enter into an interlocal agreement with Williamson Medical Center for its contribution for the cost of forensic medical investigator. Commissioner Beathard? Commissioner Beathard?
Move for approval.
Mr. Little II. Uh, Budget Committee?
A 5, 4, 0 against.
Uh, Explanation, Commissioner Beathard?
This is a, uh, resolution for a joint agreement between the Williamson Medical Center and Williamson County Department of Commerce, associated with the forensic medical investigator service.
Very good. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 61323, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
22 yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 61324, late-file resolution, resolution amending the rules, regulations, and procedures of the Williamson County Board of Commissioners concerning the creation and appointment of the Delinquent Property Tax Sale Committee. Commissioner Jones?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Wilson II. Rules Committee?
4, 4, 0 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Jones?
This is basically, it's the creating of this committee, and we're just piggyback, piggybacking them on with purchasing and insurance, uh, probably won't meet so few times, it's no sense in creating a separate committee.
All right. Uh, any discussion? This, I see none. So, ready to vote? This will take a two-thirds majority to pass, which would be, what, 16 plus? So, it'll take 16 votes to pass. So, if you're in favor of Resolution 61324, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
22 yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Late-file Resolution 61325, resolution authorizing the county mayor to enter into a contractual agreement for the provision of dental services at the WC Health Department in an amount not to exceed $175,800. Commissioner Williams?
Move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Little II. Uh, Budget Committee?
Budget Committee, 5, 4, 0 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Williams?
Williamson County is the recipient of this $175,800 up to that amount reimbursement from the state of Tennessee for dental services.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. You ready to vote? Linda? There we go. If you're in favor, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
22 yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Late-file Resolution Number 61326, resolution authorizing the county mayor to enter into a 2013-14 contractual agreement with the state of Tennessee for $1,075,900 for local health services. Commissioner Williams?
Move for approval.
Second.
Uh, Commissioner Brockman II. Budget Committee?
5, 4, 0 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Williams?
This sum is a proposed grant from the state of Tennessee for our health department.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 61326, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
22 yes, 0 no.
Okay. This concludes the agenda. Now, wait a minute. The, it's been brought to my attention, and if we'll go back in our memories a little bit, Resolution 6137 incorrectly, incorrectly lists Mid-Cumberland Community Action Agency as the leasing entity. The correct entity is listed in the caption as Mid-Cumberland Human Resources Agency. It's the opinion of the chair that this is a typo. If there are no objections, the resolution will be fixed to show the correct entity. Do I have any objections? I see none. Y'all are an agreeable bunch, so, uh... If, uh, Diane's asking me if, if everybody before we leave tonight, if you'll push your power button on your microphone, and, uh, with that being said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.